Welcome. Please allow me to call to order Ferndale City Council meeting of Monday, July the 12th, 2010 at 7:30 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Baker, here.
Galloway.
Here.
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 Here as well, all present and accounted for. Next item, Madam Clerk.
A public agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Is there any, are there any requests for changes or a motion to adopt or accept the approval of the agenda?
So moved. Second?
Seconded by Piana, motion made by Baker. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes as well, that is unanimous. Next item, Madam Clerk.
We have a public hearing on the Justice Assistance Grant allocation to the police department.
Yes, we do, and I’m going to ask Police Chief Tim Collins to introduce this item before we go into the public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the, we had applied for and have received a $12,218,000 grant from the Fern Memorial Grant, which is the Justice Assistance through the Bureau of Justice Assistance and the Department of Justice. One of the requirements of this grant is to have a public hearing to make any public comment on our proposed use of these monies. Our proposal is to reissue a radar unit to each of the uniform patrol cars. This typically comes out of the motor pool fund, but obviously with the current budget situation, we were going to make these purchases with this grant. Each one of these units costs about $1,189.40. We would replace the existing 10-year-old units for a cost of about $9,515.20. In addition to that, with the remaining funds, we would buy a laser, handheld laser device, also a speed control device, that the officer would use as a supplement to the radar units, which defeats, obviously, the radar detectors and that type of thing. That unit would cost $2,795, and that would add up to the requested amount from the grant from the federal government. This is the time that the public would be able to make comment on those purchases.
You are correct, sir. Thank you for that introduction. So this is the time and place. Call it for the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on the issue tonight? All right. I’m not seeing any, so we’ll close the public hearing, but now open it up to the council members for any questions.
I’m good.
Did I hear correctly, Chief, that our request has already been granted and this is the decision about how to allocate those funds?
As required, the grant itself has been approved.
Okay.
The funds cannot be allocated until the council has had an opportunity to review the grant and the public has had an opportunity to comment on the grant. Once that has been done, the grant, granting agency will be notified and then the funds, hopefully, will be released electronically.
And this is a grant that we would need to use for equipment, not for personnel?
That’s correct.
Be used for that. Thank you for that, Clerk.
Sure. Anyone else?
No. I just, well, one comment. I just saw how old they were when I did the ride along, so.
Oh. So you concur?
I concur.
They need to be replaced?
Yes.
Then, is there a motion required?
Not at this time, Your Honor. When we actually make the purchase, we will be back before council making the request to actually expend the funds as we normally would. So this is just a public hearing, so you have been advised of our request and the public has had an opportunity to speak.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Call to audience, Your Honor.
All right, we’ll go right into the call to audience at about 25 till, which means we can go at least until 5 after the hour. This is a section when folks can talk about any issue they wish, up to three minutes long per person, and we ask that you share your name and address verbally or in the back for further communication. Ask that you follow the patterns of integrity so that no one’s, no one is impugned. Thank you.
Hi. This is a double, a double team announcement here that we have to make. Ann Heller, 1024 Leroy, speaking as Fern Care Board President.
Dan Martin, 1447 West Hazelhurst for the Ferndale Community Foundation.
Okay, we’re going to start off. We have a number of things that we have to tell you. The first thing is this Saturday, please, please, I hope everybody’s got some time this afternoon, because on this Saturday, on the 17th, the Community Foundation is playing kickball, a kickball game against Fern Care on the 17th. It’s going to be a fabulous game. Julie Hall is going to keep an eye on everything to make sure that we stay within bounds. We have three, we have three people also helping to ump or ref or whatever, and they do in this game. And we had to pick them because they belong to both the organizations, so that’s what we had to do. So, we’re going to pay three innings.
Yep, and it promises to be highly entertaining, I’ll guarantee you. It’s fundraiser for both organizations. It’s just a pass-the-hat donation. It’ll be at 1 o’clock at Martin Road Park this Saturday, and the Ferndale seniors also have a piece of this. They’ll be selling water and picnic food and making that available, so please plan on attending. It’s going to be a great time.
Yes, please. It should be fun. Yes, it will be. The second thing is that, this is July, and July is the month for the pub crawl. That’s all you can say. July is the month of the pub crawl. It’s always, always, always the last Friday of July, and this is the very attractive poster this time. People may know the person on the poster, we don’t know. Is he eligible for any autographing of any of this poster?
Yeah, Larry Mills is the creative director for the pub crawl, and what Larry says, Larry gets.
Yeah.
Both of our organizations benefit from the pub crawl, as well as Michigan AIDS Coalition, the Ferndale Police Auxiliary, and the Community Foundation in Ferndale. It’s the 14th annual one of these, and it’s Friday, July 30th, starts at 7:00 PM at Boogie Fever. And then it’s $10 for admission, and I believe that gets you tours of 22 venues.
Yes, 22. 14th, 14th pub crawl, yeah, 22 venues. What a, that’s going to be grand.
You know, I just happened to run across the 7th Annual Pub Crawl card from seven years ago, 2003, and the admission was $5, and there were, I think, 12 stops. So it’s kind of fun looking back at that event over the years.
I haven’t been part of all of them. I have to tell everybody, if you’re not familiar with the pub crawl, it’s a grand evening. Everybody walks, everybody walks, you don’t have to worry about that. We meet at Boogie Fever, everybody gets kind of divided up in teams, and out you go. And it’s, people are just wonderful. People are friendly, the buyers want to show off their establishment, so they’re all just pumped up for this. It’s a pretty fun evening.
And what’s fun as well is to volunteer for the event, and if you’re interested in volunteering, you can contact Monica Mills at 248-545-1435, extension 117. Or you can just come to the volunteer meeting, that’s this Thursday at 6:30 at the MAC offices at 429 Levernoy.
How’s that? Yeah, so two great events for this month. Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And then, the last, the last one. That’s me. I am now speaking as the Board President for Fern Care, and I have this wonderful announcement. This is the first announcement of it. The Fern Care Free Clinic Board of Directors is pleased to announce the opening of our temporary location of the Free Medical Clinic beginning Saturday, August 7. The clinic will be open to Saturdays a month, the 1st and the 3rd Saturday every month, from 9:00 AM to noon at the Kulik Community Center located at 1201 Levernoy. Non-emergency patients between the ages of 19 through 64 without insurance will be our first priority. As time and resources allow, we will increase the number of open clinic hours and expand our services to those who have limited insurance, particularly those who do not have office visit coverage. Appointments and intake forms are now available by visiting our website, and I have my very, very clever dandy sign here, visiting the website or calling the clinic number 248-677-2273. How is that? We are opening next month, August 7. Yes, everything is in place, we’re ready to go. Everybody, the board, this is just one of the most fabulous boards ever to have worked with, and all of the friends of the board who have helped to do this. And I, just to tell you, this is our very first announcement of the city of Ferndale. Ferndale residents have been so supportive and so helpful that we thought that this should be the first place that we would announce this. So August 7, we will have a free medical clinic here in Ferndale.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. My name’s Tim Benzick, I live at 1581 East Webster. The reason why I’m here is really, it’s difficult to describe, but it has to do with the fire and police and the city’s services that are under attack, really, right now from budget cuts. I’ve tried to be informed about this, I’ve tried to get as much of a informed picture, just like a mosaic, and try to respond to it and have some understanding, so I’m not reacting to something that isn’t there. I’ve met you over at the Pride Center, I’ve gone around the community, I’ve talked to different people, and I’ve just, really, I’ve spoken to the chief just recently, and he doesn’t seem to be a very unreasonable person. In fact, he seems to be very fair. And I think it’s a mistake right now that what’s happening with our police department and the conflict between the union and the city, there’s just got to be a better common ground. Every one of the police officers that I’ve spoken to loves this city. They love it passionately. I mean, there’s no finer bunch of guys, there really isn’t. And I can tell that each and every one of you loves the city the same way. And, you know, it’s hard to get past the anger, you respond to what you hear from different things, and then you start thinking about it, and I’ve spent a lot of sleepless nights on this issue. And I’ve even called Bob Bruner, and I said, “Bob, how can I help? How can I help?” And, you know, we talked a little bit, and he explained it to me, the situation, just like you did, Mr. Covey. And he said, “Well, Tim, I don’t think there’s going to be mayhem in the streets.” Well, I mean, there has been. There’s been the American Legion post where the gang shooting was, there’s been the police officer who almost got ran over, there’s been robbery sprees and all kinds of things. You yourself have been a victim. And the way that I see it, the strength of our police force, their presence on the street, whether there’s crime or not, whether they’re doing anything or not, they’re doing their job, they’re ambassadors for all of us. And somehow, somehow, I just feel I owe a little something to them. I mean, you know, it just, I keep thinking, I read the Woodward talk, and I always see the articles in there about the crime, and one thing that just really strikes me is, you know, are we going to wait until some cop is killed because we’re short-staffed? I mean, we can’t afford to take that risk. And I guess all I’m asking is that you guys find some common ground, go a little bit out of your way, try to, try to take that next step so that maybe there isn’t that stubbornness on your side. Even the chief said there’s a little stubbornness on both sides. And I just can’t see, I mean, we say it when we come in here, the Pledge of Allegiance. That’s the preamble for this meeting. “One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.” Well, we’re not united right now. And I think that’s really the goal of any leader, any good leader, is to unite people, not to pull a fast one or to play politics. You know, it’s not about any one of us. It’s about all of us. That’s what makes a community. That’s what makes people move here. That’s what makes people come. That’s what Mr. Mayor, I believe, meant by showing the nation a different way. I mean, you guys are missing a PR opportunity. You really are. $3 million? Big deal! That’s a little consideration. You’ve got a great library over there, you can have all kinds of fundraisers.
Hey, Tim, I’m going to ask you to wrap it up. You have your three minutes, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I’m Crystal Praxmeyer, the editor and publisher of the Ferndale 115 News. Good evening, council, and all of our friends and neighbors. Something disturbing has come to my attention, and I wanted to come here and talk about it. It seems that despite the fact that we have a loyal following of over 2,000 readers, there are still people in the community who do not realize that the Ferndale 115 News is now updated nearly every day. We also have divided our online paper into sections, so you can easily find information on the topics and groups that are important to you. Plus, the homepage has the most recent stories. I’ve been hesitant to use this public forum for shameless self-promotion, but the 115 gives everyone in Ferndale free access to community news and information, in a place where people can share their views in an effective, responsible way, without being attacked by anonymous comments, the way other papers and online forums allow. We have event listings, police reports, and much more. Ferndale is a special place, and the Ferndale 115 News is succeeding in its goal of informing, inspiring, and uniting people who care about the community. If you have been following the 115, you could know the ins and outs of the city budget process, the changes made by council in the administrative structure, the reasons behind it, and the groups that are petitioning to repeal it. You could know about upcoming fun events like Green Tuesday, the pub crawl, and Fight Oros Ferndale. And you would know about the good work of our neighbors with things like the CFF Awards, the Beautification Awards, the library dedication, and the achievements of our Ferndale school students. And you’d also get to hear about the fun stuff, like the family who found a 200-year-old grave in their backyard, or the new Game Show style dating site created by a fellow Ferndalian. Plus, we are getting more and more reader submitted stories. So please, let’s not keep quiet about this resource. Go to the Ferndale115.com and be part of this grassroots community paper. And thank you to everyone who has gotten involved so far and supported this project. Thanks.
Mayor Covey and City Council, thank you for your time. Douglas Christie, Ferndale resident, and I’m up here this evening for two items. The first one is taking place tomorrow at the Kulik Community Center. The Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission is having our monthly Green Tuesday, and tomorrow’s topic is on how to have a green barbecue. And we’re actually barbecuing outside, not inside. We’ll have two grills, one for people who enjoy eating meat, and the other one for vegetarians. Lots of other free food, all based around local and organic and natural plates, natural repellent, biodegradable, recyclable, the whole theme is green. And we have several sponsors for this event. Western Market, Michigan Green Safe Products, the Wab Brewery, and Garden Fresh Salsa and Chips will also be there. It is a free event, open to residents and non-residents, and we hope to see council there, at least for a little bit, enjoying, and we’ll also have a bunch of handouts talking about, or I should say incorporating, the things that we’ve done at this green barbecue, so when you have a barbecue at your house or your friends, you’ll be a little bit more up to date on how you can make it more green. So that’s tomorrow at the Kulik Center, 6:30 to 8:00. More information can be found on the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission Facebook page, or if that’s a little tough to get to, perhaps the city clerk or the DDA will be able to direct you to one of us. The second event, although it is on the agenda tonight and not officially made, hopefully it will all go through, is the Green Cruise. So I’d be quick on that one. The 6th Annual Green Cruise, Sierra Club Green Cruise, once again, will be in downtown Ferndale, August 14th, this Saturday, from 10 to 3. The bike rides are a little bit earlier, the parade is at 11, and we will not have rain this year, it will be a beautiful Green Cruise, and we’ll have more information as we go on. And again, that can be found on Facebook, also, Green Cruise for Ferndale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, or afternoon, everybody. Keith Dalton, 3036 Horton. Twenty-odd years ago, my wife and I moved into this community, and this town was pretty much dead. And I remember when Mayor Gettrard first started to wrestle back our city council and everything, and I heard all these naysayers come up and say how this was going to end our city and our city was going to wither on the vine, and yet we’ve just grown. Over the years, as the gay community moved in, I heard how that was going to destroy our community, and that kind of, our community has just grown and prospered. I heard how when the blacks had started to move in, how our city was going to die and wither on the vine, and yet we still prosper, we’re getting ready to open up Fern Care, we just opened up a new library. And I just have to say that, I want to thank you all for your governance. I know it’s not an easy job to do, and it’s a very unthankful job. People like to come up and complain at you, and as you all know, I’ve had differences of opinions with many of you on many subjects. But I do have to relate one thing, that when, not but a few months ago, you know, when people are so afraid of change, not but a few months ago, we had a, the police came into my neighborhood, rightfully so, I found out later, and with SWAT team and guns drawn and a friendly dog got shot, because they were raiding a house of people in my neighborhood who happened to be people who have lived there 30 years and were allowing their 30-year-old son to apparently deal oxycontin out of their home. So as everybody talks about, “These people are going to kill our city, and these people are going to kill our city, and oh my God, what are we going to do,” nobody’s immune to any kind of, and nobody’s exempt, and nobody is pure, and nobody, so again, I thank you all for all your work. I’m sure I’ll have differences of opinion with you, but please do know that not all of us are just disliking you, and I’m just happy that I don’t have to be there to make some of the decisions that I’m grateful for all of you for doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
Good evening. My name is Doug Raiver, Director of the Ferndale Public Library, Ferndale resident at 2055 Levernoy, and just wanted to stop by tonight and say thank you to members of the council who were able to come to our preview party this last Saturday for the new library. More importantly, I want to say thank you to the people of Ferndale for making that library possible. It says so right on the dedication plaque, as a matter of fact. The first line under Ferndale Public Library is “Made possible by the citizens of Ferndale,” and that is just so true. The one thing I wanted to add to that is that, as we all know, southeast Michigan, Detroit area, is experiencing a pretty severe economic blow. We’re dealing with some very hard times right now, and different communities in this area have responded in different ways to this situation. And I’m really proud, actually, to be a citizen of Ferndale because of the way Ferndale has responded to this context, this situation. Actually, there’s been a number of things here tonight, the comments we’ve heard earlier, the fact that Fern Care is opening, congratulations. There’s another sign, the fact that we have a new library. Ferndale is doing amazing things. I don’t know exactly what the secret is, I don’t know what the magic is, but we’ve got something here that other communities don’t really quite seem to have. And the public library, the Ferndale Public Library, I think, is a part of that. We’re really pleased. I wanted to let everybody know that we are almost ready to open, we decided to have a party last Saturday anyway. The main issue that we’re dealing with is getting our technology infrastructure in place, it’s pretty complex, and we need to get some computers and technology and equipment installed and get some training. One of the things that I want to mention specifically is we’re going from 13 to 40 public access computers, and we’ve needed to purchase a new time management control system to manage the use of those computers. And one last thing I’ll add tonight is that, of those 40 computers, most of them are actually funded through a grant opportunity we’re participating in. Michigan State University got a very large grant to fund the expansion of broadband access throughout the southeast Michigan area. Many libraries are participants, and we’re leveraging $4,000 of our money into $36,000 of money for new computers as a result of that. MSU tried to push that schedule ahead as fast as they possibly could for us in order to get the computers here in time, but they couldn’t quite get it. Other libraries in the grant are just now getting their orders placed. That’s the main reason, actually, we’re a little behind. So we’ve got our computers in now, we’re going to get them installed in the next couple weeks, and we should be ready and open to go, I hope, by around the end of the month. And I’ll be back to announce that. But again, thank you, everybody, thanks to the people of Ferndale. We’ve got something special here, and it shows up in a lot of different ways, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raiver.
Sherri Wells, 315 West Troy. Two weeks ago, at the end of my three minutes, you asked if I was taking your advice to use fans to mask the noise from the bars on Nine Mile Road, a block away from where my house was built in 1923, and I have been for 22 years. Since then, residents stopped me in the street and helped me make this list. Number one, fans are unnecessary during cooler nights and seasons. Number two, most fans now in use are made to be quiet. Number three, unneeded fans waste electricity. The point of irony is consent agenda item B is the city’s energy use reduction. Four, fans may cover noise, the crowd and the music, but not do anything about the heavy bass. Back in February, my teenage daughter told you how she demonstrated to me that despite turning down the volume and muting a DVD, the heavy bass still came through. There’s a book for sound engineers called Noise and Vibration Control. The title shows those are two entities. Our police officers have been educated to that fact as well. Five, a fan sufficiently noisy enough to cover loud music and crowd noise might also cover up sounds we want to hear, change in a baby’s breathing, or, as you know, Honorable Mayor, a burglar in our bedroom while we sleep. Another resident told me that when he is out of town, his wife will not use a fan so that she can hear any strange noises and be able to protect herself. Number six, I heard you, Mr. Mayor, a few years ago at a meeting with a Withington House residence about a bar noise near them, the bar is since gone, that about your use of fans to cover mower noise. Mower noise doesn’t usually have a heavy bass with it. I assume that most of us are ready to sleep by midnight, but I suspect that your conscientiousness about mayoral duties vis-à-vis public relations with our businesses has led you to check out those which do much of their business between 10:00 PM and 2:30 AM. You seem in general to enjoy loud music and loud noise, except early morning mowers. I am concerned about the effect, however, on the sleep of babies, children, adults of all ages, and pets. The biography of Councilman Galloway on the city website stated that he was a leader in eye care, a grassroots organization that opposed the development of state fairgrounds as a racetrack and amphitheater. That movement involved the noise aspects, as well as parking and unruliness. We now have fewer police officers, do we need them to be called to these bars and other such places for noise? It’s a simple fix. Music should only, music and crowd noise should only be as loud as necessary for the customers to hear it where they sit. That way, they also do not need to shout over it to have a conversation. Check out Anita’s patio. And they will have leave less hyped up and loud. The bass needs to be adjusted downward, but it must be tested inside the affected homes. Walls amplified, and it carries through the ground. We had a police officer come into our living room. My daughter recognized him as one who’d been assigned to the high school. The comments has got to be the worst place acoustically on earth. Yet he could detect it in our home without any meter. The city hired a sound expert to protect residents over the state fairgrounds issue. We need to hire one for downtown. I request a motion to that effect tonight. If not, I’d like to hear from others who have this problem. My number is 543-LAWS. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Bob Porter, 855 Marshfield, Ferndale. It’s kind of fun sitting in the back and letting the people ask you about these things. Kind of enjoyed that. You had the opportunity to discuss the medical marijuana ordinance, or how we were going to deal with in the city of Ferndale a little while ago, and as a result of some health problems, I was unable to make that meeting, so I just wanted to make a couple of comments here this evening. You know, I do believe that the state, and this conjecture comes from the fact that I have visited different facilities throughout the state, I have interviewed different people, most of them ill and in need of medical marijuana, some, I think, that just got a note because they got a note and they wanted to have some fun, and that’s going to happen, I’m sure. But all in all, there were some people that were in desperate need, and I saw how the operations worked. I think it’s something, maybe you saw in the paper today, Royal Oak is considering something, even though they’re in their six-month moratorium, relating to a 2,300-square-foot warehouse, which would probably be a grow opportunity for a collective group. I think the economic opportunities that are available today are something that we shouldn’t sit on too long. I do believe the state laws do give us the authority for our police department to do what they need to do if some people are violating their rights in that type of facility. I think the key issue to that, though, is zoning. You know, I don’t personally want the situation through my neighborhoods. We talk about a caregiver in a neighborhood having the opportunity to have five patients that they’re working with. Well, if I and my wife and my son, 23-years-old, living at home, decided the three of us wanted to get caregiver cards, that’s possible. That gives me the authority to grow 180 plants, have 15 people coming and going. going on a regular basis. So I am concerned a little bit about how we deal with neighborhoods. But in our zoning areas such as C3, the MXD2 areas and the M1 zoning areas are appropriate for this type of operation. The MXD2, as well as the M1, would offer the opportunity that, for example, that Royal Oak is looking at tonight, for a collective grower, that type of space and so forth, and would fill empty warehouses in our commercial district. I do think that there are a couple of other things that do have to be considered. One, we have to make sure that our code enforcement is very critical. When you deal with the additional electrical and so forth that are used in these types of places, fire suppression and the electrical concerns, we need to make sure that that code is enforced. And the only other concern that I really have that we can deal with is the number of chemicals that are used, because when you get into large grow facilities, is that they're hydroponic, and they're using huge numbers of different chemicals that are somewhat toxic, some of them, to nurture those plants. So I think we do have to be aware of what the disposal requirements would be of those chemicals and/or the medium that is used. You know, those types of things being put right into receptacles, we're talking about being a green city, but those things being put into a receptacle, or in the days of polar, if we all remember that, being put down in the sewer, I think could be a negative. But all in all, I think if we get our zoning in place, the economic opportunities will grow, and something that's legal and people that are really in need of this particular type of treatment will be facilitated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. It's always good to see you. We still have a couple of minutes left. Did anyone else wish to speak tonight? All right, then we will close the public speaks portion. The call to audience is closed. Madam Clerk.
That brings us to the Consent Agenda item, Your Honor. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 28, 2010. Item B, approval to adopt a resolution establishing the Millennial Mayor's Congress Energy Savings Protocol as an official energy use reduction goal for the city. Item C, approval of a special event permit for the Sierra Club Green Cruise to be held Saturday, August 14, 2010, from 10:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. in the southwest section of the Withington parking lot and for bike rides at 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., and a parade at 11:00 a.m. on the city streets of Ferndale. And Item D, approval of the bills and payrolls, as certified by the city manager, to be paid, subject to review by the Council Finance Committee.
Very good. Would anyone like to remove from further discussion any of those items tonight?
I'd like to pull Item B as in boy for a few corrections.
Thank you. Councilwoman Baker pulling Item B as in boy. Anything else? Not a motion to adopt A, C, and D?
Support.
Thank you. Lennon Baker, motion and second. Discussion. Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Covings?
Yes, as well. Passed unanimously. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Regular Agenda Item A, consideration of resolutions of appreciation for retired Fire Chief Schmidt and retired Police Chief Kitchen.
Thank you very much. We have two resolutions in front of us, one for the Fire Chief Roger Schmidt, who retired just a few weeks ago, and also for retired Police Chief Michael Kitchen, who just left a couple of weeks ago. Would anyone like to read these into the record for us?
I'll read Chief Kitchen's, however. I didn't get a copy of it.
I can read. Do you want to go ahead and read Roger Schmidt's, or Councilman Galloway's?
All right. I'd ask unanimous consent for the following resolution of appreciation. Fire Chief Roger Schmidt, after serving the city of Ferndale and its citizens for 33 years, retired on April 30, 2010. Chief Schmidt began his service with the city of Ferndale in 1977, and served 10 years as firefighter before his promotion to sergeant in 1987, then lieutenant in 93, later captain in 1994. He was named interim chief in 2004 and chief of the department in 2005. Chief Schmidt has served the city and its residents with dedication and integrity. Chief Schmidt was an original member of the Oakway Hazardous Materials Team and served as the city's hazmat coordinator. He was also the EMS coordinator for several years. Chief Schmidt was trained in technical rescue, and our current tech rescue team was formed while he was chief. He enjoys volunteering at the Ferndale Historical Museum, where he's serving as president for 2009, 2010. He's published a book, Tough as Nails: The History of the Ferndale Fire Department. He's a historical trained buff and was on the executive board for the Blue Water Chapter of the National Railway Historical Society. As he concludes his distinguished career with the city of Ferndale Fire Department, Chief Schmidt looks forward to spending time with his wife, Deborah, and children, Jesse, Nicole Schmidt, and Katina, Mike Mills, and grandchildren, Brianna, Madison, Grace, Abigail, Katie, and one on the way with Nicole. Now therefore be resolved that we Ferndale's elected officials do hereby express our community's deep appreciation and best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement to Fire Chief Roger Schmidt, as he retires after 33 years of dedicated service.
Support for that? Unanimous support?
Support.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman.
And I, too, would like unanimous support for this one. Chief Kitchen began his service with the city of Ferndale in 1975 and served nine years as a police officer before his promotion to sergeant in 84, lieutenant in 91, and captain in November of 91, and the chief of police in 96. Chief Kitchen has served the city and its residents with dedication and integrity for 14 years as chief of police, the longest in the history of the Ferndale Police Department, and the second-longest in Oakland County. Chief Kitchen's accomplishment includes a master's degree in criminal justice from Wayne State University in 90, a graduate of the FBI Academy, Quantico, Virginia, class of 92, graduate of lead staff and command, past president of the Oakland County Chiefs of Police, member of the Clemens Advisory Board, and the Oakland County Net Board, and numerous others. Chief Kitchen is an accomplished pilot, enjoys boating, fishing, and spending valuable time with his family. As he concludes his distinguished career with the city of Ferndale Police Department, Chief Kitchen looks forward to spending time with his wife, Mary Dee, daughters Michelle and her husband David Morgan, Merron Kitchen, and grandsons Jason and Deacon. Be resolved that we Ferndale elected officials do hereby express our community's deep appreciation and best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement to Chief of Police Michael P. Kitchen, as he retires after 35 years of dedicated service.
Very good. Unanimous support on both of those. And let's do a quick round of applause again for both of us. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for helping draw up those resolutions as well. Next item.
Regular Agenda Item B, presentation of long-term financial plan and consideration of telephone survey research contract.
Thank you. Before you introduce this, Mr. Brunner, there was a note in here from a resident that wanted, did they want it put on the website? Is that what that note was?
They want it, I guess, acknowledged tonight.
I'm sorry?
Oh, what does Mr. Gagne want us to do?
Yeah.
Basically, he wanted his letter read at tonight's meeting, I believe, as well as at some point this presentation being made available on the website.
Okay, that's what I was referring to. Will we be able to put this on the website?
Absolutely. The city clerk and I will find the appropriate place on the website to put it this week.
Very good. The floor is yours, Mr. City Manager, to introduce this presentation.
Thanks, Your Honor. In the goals and objectives that the council adopted back at the end of May for the fiscal year that started this month, the council asked that we investigate options for increasing the city's millage in order to generate new revenue. As the council will certainly recall, we just got through a budget process where we cut $3.1 million from the, from the city's budget. And so tonight, I will present some options for millage increases. However, before we get to that, I wanted to review the city's long-term financial plan to provide a background in case folks weren't paying attention to the, to the budget process, and for those who were, to look ahead and see where the city's finances are headed. So I'm going to move through this relatively quickly tonight and try to just set the background for any questions that, that you may have. The Government Finance Officers Association defines the long-term financial plan and outlines the elements that are contained within. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the city's financial environment, revenue and expenditure forecasts, as well as a financial balance analysis, and then we'll talk about financial strategies, and that's where we'll get into a discussion of the city's millage rate. First of all, there's three critical issues within the city's financial environment. The first is our personnel costs increase year after year. Those are driven in large part by health insurance and prescription drug insurance costs. Our property tax revenue has been decreasing for the last couple of years and will continue to do so, and state revenue sharing has also been decreasing for many years now. So these are the important issues that we have to look at as we consider the city's long-term financial outlook. Now, in terms of our economic trends, personnel costs account for nearly three-quarters of the city's general fund budget. Wages, 38%. Our post-employment benefit costs, retiree healthcare in large part, is 18% of our expenditures. And then our health and prescription drug insurance for active employees is actually less than what we spend on retirees. Pensions is 5%, and together, these make up the city's personnel costs, and they are trending upwards. Wages, we see here the last couple of years, the unions that have been under contract have been under contract for 2% increases. As we move ahead, those, we have contracts that expire at the end of this current fiscal year and the end of next fiscal year, and as we're, we're looking ahead, we'll be looking for wage freezes, as we have with the court employees across the street, and also reductions. So wages are about to become either stagnant or perhaps be reduced as collective bargaining and arbitration allows. Overall, our post-employment benefit costs, our annual required contributions for those are going up, gone up an estimated half-million dollars over the last three years. And with the workforce reduction that we have this year, it remains to be seen how that's going to affect our OPEB required contributions, whether it's going to level off or hopefully maybe go down a little bit. Health insurance, over the course of the last 10 years, even though the city has reduced employee health and prescription drug insurance, the annual, the city's annual average increase has been 8.6%. Pensions, this year marks the first year in many years that the city's had to make a annual required contribution to the policeman-fireman-retirement system, and we have six and seven-digit contributions forecast for the, for the years ahead. Property values, it's a little good news, bad news. What we're seeing is that the residential property values are beginning to stabilize, but that commercial-industrial values are still decreasing, and we'll talk a little bit later on about what that means for Ferndale specifically. Finally, the economic trend for state revenue sharing, this is a quote from a report published by the Senate Fiscal Agency, and basically what it says is that the city's, or the state's financial situation is terrible, and the outlook for continued state revenue sharing is not good. So overall, the city's financial situation is going to get worse before it gets better. Now, specifically into our revenue forecasts, there's three sources of revenue, account for three-quarters of overall general fund revenue, property tax, by and large, largest source of general fund revenue, half of the city's total revenue this year, state shared revenue, 13%, and district court revenue at 12%. Those three revenue sources are the three that matter. Our revenue forecast, Oakland County has projected countywide taxable value decreases of 12%, 5%, and 2.5% over the next three years. This is where our, the city's mix of commercial and industrial versus residential properties is important. Because the residential properties are beginning to stabilize and commercial-industrial are still leading the declines, communities that are highly residential, such as Pleasant Ridge or Huntington Woods, they may beat that countywide average. A community that has a higher percentage of commercial-industrial property, such as Auburn Hills, may do worse. So overall, what I've shown here is that approximately 70% of the county's taxable value is residential, Ferndale's 75%. So Ferndale's a little more heavily weighted towards residential than the county average, but not out of the ballpark, so to speak. So this graph shows our property tax revenue forecast. The, the blue line is the actual property tax revenue from fiscal year 2002 to fiscal year ending 2011, which just started. The straight gray trend line there shows what the, what our revenue trend was, even including this year's huge drop. It didn't bring that trend line down significantly. But what you see on the bottom part of the chart, the purple, green, and red lines are basically a worst-case scenario, medium-case scenario, best-case scenario, where the county average is the worst-case scenario. That's the red line, and then have 70%, 75% of that average and 50% of that average. But obviously, any way you slice it, the city's property tax revenue, which has been very stable over time, is headed for a big drop really fast. Our state revenue sharing forecast, state revenue sharing consists of two different types of revenue, constitutionally guaranteed revenues that the state can't take away, and statutorily approved revenues that the state legislature appropriates every year. And for the city of Ferndale, about 1.4 of that has been constitutionally guaranteed. That's according to the, that specific dollar amount is guaranteed. It's based on what the state actually collects in, in sales tax revenue. But this year, that's estimated to be about, or, I'm sorry, this last year that just ended, 1.4 million, and that's money that the city can count on in the future. 1.3 million in statutory revenue sharing, that, I'm willing to bet, is going to go away sooner rather than later. And we can have honest disagreements about whether that's going to end on October 1st of this year, or next year, or the year after that. But folks who pay attention to this stuff have, have said that without an additional infusion of federal economic stimulus money, the state's not going to be able to continue the revenue sharing program indefinitely into the future. This is what our state revenue sharing looks like. Again, the blue line is the actual revenue up to the current fiscal year. The gray trend line shows what that average has been from fiscal year ending 2001, which is when state revenue sharing peaked at $4.4 million, down to the, the current fiscal year that just started. It's budgeted at $2.2 million. It's lost half of our revenue overall. And as I said, if you follow the gray trend line down, there's best-case, worst-case, and medium-case scenario there at, at the bottom. Just, it's just a matter of time before that statutory revenue sharing goes away. Now, this is total general fund revenue. This graph is a little bit misleading compared to the other two because it includes all kinds of one-time revenues, such as a half-million-dollar grant to expand the, the community center. So the city's overall revenue can fluctuate quite a bit from year to year. But even still, you see that from fiscal year ending 2000 to the current year, 2011, that gray trend line shows the city on a pretty decent positive trajectory of, of where we were headed before this precipitous decline. And then you've got three scenarios of revenues falling off in the next three years. The difference here overall between best and worst-case scenario isn't, isn't that great. But what it shows you is that in a matter of just a year from now, the city could be spending less money than it did in fiscal year ending 2000. So we're, in a sense, going back to the future. Conclusions, the city's three largest revenue sources are going to be drastically and simultaneously declining over the course of the next three years, even in the best-case scenario. Expenditure forecasts, again, I mentioned, personnel costs, very big part of the, the, the largest part of the city's budget. Wages- largest part of the city's budget. Ways, wage freezes and/or reductions may be achievable in the years ahead. The city's annual required contribution for the police and fire retirement system is expected to increase by twenty percent annually for the next three years. Again, the city's health and prescription drug insurance benefit costs are going to go up for the next several years. And our OPEB costs are likely to increase at a rate that's similar to our health insurance costs, because those OPEB costs are primarily health insurance costs. For the sake of our financial model, I'm assuming that the city's non-personnel costs can be managed and will not increase over the next three years. So if you take all those assumptions together, you end up with a figure of three-point-five percent that the, that the city's general fund costs will increase every year. Now, the way to say that is that in order for the city to keep doing what it's doing, the way it's doing it, it's going to cost three-point-five percent more from one year to the next. So if you take those assumptions and plug them in to our expenditure numbers, this is the picture it gets. You see that overall, and from fiscal year ending 2000 to the current fiscal year ending 2011, the city's spending has been on upward trend. You see here recently, the last couple of years, we've had to drive our spending down. But if we continue to try to provide the same services at the same levels in the years of head, you're going to see that, that red expenditure line actually pops right back up and meets the trend line again in just two short years from now. We can slow that, slow that down under the medium-case scenario, or the best-case scenario. But I think it's kind of interesting, if you look at the, the angle of the increase between fiscal year ending 2007 and fiscal year ending 2009, where we have that very steep increase on our blue line, it's almost a perfect parallel to the, to the increase on the red worst-case scenario line. So we know these kind of increases are not outside the realm of possibility, because we've seen them happen here recently. Now, financial balance analysis is basically what happens when you take the revenue projections and the expenditure projections and put them together on the same graph. Here we see our, our actual revenues and expenditures from fiscal year ending 2000 to the current year. You can see that red line and that blue line do a little dance over the year. Sometimes revenues end up on top, sometimes expenditures do. But, but by and large, the city's been living within its means. So those two lines have followed each other over the last several years. Those, the straight lines, there's a blue line and a red line, those are also, those are the trend lines for the city's revenues and expenditures over that same period. And you can see they're very close together. And then, when you get over to the right side of the graph, you see the green line, which is the city's best-case revenue forecast, best-case scenario revenue forecast, is, is heading south. And our best-case expenditure forecast is that purple line, where you see expenditures going up. And obviously, a big gap between those two lines. And that gap can be measured. Over the worst-case scenario, it's nineteen-point-six million dollars over the course of three years, fifteen-point-seven or eleven-point-eight under medium and best-case scenario. That leaves us with average deficits over the course of that three years of three-point-nine to six-point-five million dollars. So again, we just got through a budget process where we cut three-point-one million dollars out of our budget. In the years ahead, best-case scenario, we're looking at three-point-nine million dollar So overall, not a very good financial outlook over the course of the next three years. So what are the financial strategies for dealing with this situation? Well, we can reduce expenditures. Our non-personnel costs account for approximately thirty-eight percent of the general fund. It's mathematically impossible to balance the budget by reducing non-personnel costs alone. They just don't account for enough of the city's budget. So it's impossible to balance the budget for the next three years without reducing the city's personnel costs. Personnel costs, in order to balance the budget strictly by attacking those alone, which of course we wouldn't, but if the city did, we'd actually have to reduce personnel costs by ninety-five percent to balance the budget over the course of the next three years, even under the best-case scenario. We also, the city has fixed costs, which really can't control. Retiree benefits, which are promises that have already been made. Liability insurance, which is, it's not like switching to GEICO, the city can't save a lot of money. Street lighting, the city's a price-taker there, can't negotiate for lower rates on our street lighting. Those kinds of things that don't really contribute to providing services currently account for approximately a quarter of the budget. Relying on expenditure, that means that it's variable costs in the city's budget that the council can control and reduce. And so relying on expenditure deductions alone to balance the budget, we'd have to reduce those variable costs and services that they provide by approximately forty percent over the next three years. So without a revenue increase, those fixed costs may go from a quarter of the budget to forty percent of the budget, leaving the city with only seven million dollars for current services. That, another way of thinking about that, seven million dollars is the city's disposable income after all the bills are paid. And just to give you a comparison of what seven million dollars buys, the net cost of the police department in this current year is six-point-five million dollars. And that's with nine less officers this year than we had last year. So moving on to revenue increases, again, three revenue sources account for seventy-five percent of the city's total revenues. Property taxes are fifty percent. Increasing those requires a vote of the people. State revenue sharing is basically completely beyond the city's control. And district court revenue depends on police personnel. And decreases in police personnel and pending state legislation are going to make it difficult to increase. That is a revenue source over time. So basically, the city's only real option for increasing revenue is a millage rate increase. Now, the options for those include a headly override of the city's general fund operating millage. It's been rolled back from twenty mils to fourteen-point-five-four-four-eight mils by headly rollbacks over the last several years. The city could implement a new special-purpose millage that's unique to the city, or a, or we'll talk a little bit more about special-purpose millages in a minute. But distinct from a city's special-purpose millage is an authority millage. If, for example, the city was to establish a police, or a fire, or a recreation authority, that authority, like the DDA or the library, could have the power to levy its, its own millage. So we'll, we'll look at those options a little bit more closely in a minute. But first, the headly override, the city charter limits the city's operating millage to twenty mils. It's been reduced by headly rollback. And a headly override would allow the city to levy up to that twenty mils again at the council's discretion. It is possible to levy less than that. And there are some communities that do.
City manager, can I interrupt for just one second?
Sure.
And I know I'm almost asking the impossible, but could you give us just a, a very brief statement of what the headly amendment is? This is a state piece of legislation, this is not something that the city controls.
That's true. The, the headly amendment, what it amended was the state constitution. And it was approved by voters in 1978. And it was a tax limitation law at that time, that until Proposal A came around in 1994, didn't really have a, a big detrimental effect on the city. But since then, the city's millage rates have been rolled back permanently by headly. Back in the old days, before Proposal A, millage rates could roll up. But now, when times are good, millage rate gets rolled back. When times are bad, it can't roll up. And this is something that is in the state constitution, it's not under the city's control. The, the voters have the ability to approve a, a headly override.
Thank you.
So this is a projection of, of the revenue that a headly override would produce. What I've done here with, there's a gray trend line, that you see the, the straight line that's basically goes from the, the bottom left to the top right part of this chart. And that's the trend line that the city was on through fiscal year ending 2009, before property values began to decline. And I, I've described that in the past, I think, as about a three-point-three percent annual increase in property tax revenue. So that's where we were headed. And if, and if you look at the, you know, from the back of the room, or, or on television, you probably can't even see where the actual line deviates from the trend line. This has been incredibly stable source of revenue over the years, very predictable. And now, within the last two years, it started to decline. And here, you see where those declines are headed. Again, this is the same medium-best and worst-case scenario that I had on the previous slide. But on the top-right part of this slide, you see where the revenue would increase if the millage rate was increased to twenty mils in the next fiscal year. And so you see that property tax revenue skyrockets for one year, and then, within the second or the third year, starts to meet back up with the trend line of where the city was headed to begin with. And again, if a headly override was approved, the, the city wouldn't have to levy all twenty mils. So the, the city could actually levy enough just to get us back to where that trend line was, or someplace south of that trend line, as the city council approved. Now, this is a snapshot of the average principal residence tax bill. So that, these are numbers based on data from Oakland County equalization for the average taxable value of a principal residence in Ferndale. It's not all residential property in Ferndale, it's just the owner-occupied principal residences. And as you can see here, the, the first year on this chart is the fiscal year that ended 2007. The average tax bill was twenty-two-hundred-thirty-two dollars. And it went up and it peaked in fiscal year ending 2009, and has been declining for the next two years. And this shows that, that the six lines, kind of sprawling out from the, from the center towards the right hand of this chart, show, again, the best-case scenario, the medium-case scenario, and the worst-case scenario, both with and without a headly override. So those top three lines show the average principal residence tax bill with a headly override, even under the, the best-case scenario or the worst-case scenario, depending on your point of view. Even twenty mils wouldn't return the average tax bill to where it was in fiscal year ending 2009. Now, without a headly override, those lines across the bottom of the chart, the red, green, and purple lines, show that the average tax bill is going to continue to decline. And folks are gonna, very quickly, their, the average tax bill is going to end up being lower than it was just a couple of years ago in the fiscal year that ended in 2007. Now, getting into the special-purpose millage options, there's, there's two types of special-purpose millages, one that's authorized by the city charter, or one that is authorized by state statute. There are three state statutes that authorize special-purpose millages that the city is not already levying. The city does levy the special-purpose millages authorized for the library, for garbage disposal. But it doesn't levy a mil for a band, the firefighters' or policeman retirement fund, or for activities or services for older persons.
What's the first one for?
The Band Act. Act 230 of 1923 would allow the city to levy up to two mils to have a band for musical purposes.
Okay.
Think the Music Man.
Okay.
This is not an act that I'm going to talk about any further, because it really, we don't have a band, we don't, that's not going to help the city's financial outlook.
We've got free bands that'll play for us.
Yeah, absolutely. But I'm going to talk a little bit about the other two options. First, the, a city's special-purpose millage. The attorney general has opined that they have to be authorized by the charter. The city's charter does not authorize one. So if the city council wanted to levy a new special-purpose millage that's dedicated for a specific city service or services, then it would require a charter amendment. And charter amendments require a two-third vote of the council to get on the ballot, and then fifty percent plus one of the vote of the electors. And I've verified that both with the city attorney and the city clerk, so if I'm wrong, tell me now. These issues get pretty legally complicated pretty quick, so I'll take this opportunity to thank the city attorney and the city clerk for their help in researching these issues. The firefighters' and police officers' retirement millage. Our police and fire retirement system is funded by general fund and employee contributions. The Public Act 345 of 1937 authorizes cities to levy a millage for police and fire personnel pensions with voter approval. Now, it may be possible to convert the city's charter retirement system to an Act 345 system, but that would require a lot more research. And the tax revenue that it generates would fluctuate from year to year, as the city's costs go up, the millage rate would go up, and taxpayers might not end up getting whiplash because their, their tax bills might vary greatly from, from year to year. So due to the legal complexities, potential complexities, and the fact that this doesn't provide a steady revenue source, I, I don't really think it's an option that is helpful in this particular situation that we find ourselves in. Now, the services for older persons, it authorizes the city to levy up to one mil. And that money could be used to offset the cost of our recreation department to fund senior services, and offset costs that are currently being funded onto the general fund. But the, the recreation department's total net cost to the general fund in the current fiscal year is budgeted at less than a quarter million dollars. Now, one mil levy would generate, at least this year, it would have generated six-hundred-thousand dollars. Now, some of that six-hundred-thousand dollars could have been used to offset the cost of the recreation department, but the revenue couldn't be used to offset other costs to the general fund. So rather than relieving the financial pressure on the general fund, we'd end up having more money for services to, for older persons at a time when the city is reducing other services. Now, that may be a good thing if you're an older person and you receive those services, but from a budget and finance standpoint, it's not helping the general fund in, in the way that we need it to. Now, the special-purpose authority millages, I mentioned there's two, two types. There's emergency services and recreational authorities that are both authorized by public acts. Both of those acts require two or more municipalities to incorporate an authority. That means the city of Ferndale can't do it alone. I, I don't think that an authority could be incorporated quickly enough to put a tax proposal on the ballot before the next fiscal year. I think this is a good idea to continue to pursue and examine in the future. The city of Ferndale and our neighbors have been talking about a potential fire authority for a long time, and will continue to explore that option. But I don't think that's an option that can be implemented fast enough to relieve the city's general fund in the next fiscal year. So, next steps in, in looking at these options. The city council needs to determine which, if any, of these revenue options it wants to investigate and consider further. I suggest that we start with some telephone survey research to determine which, if any, of these millage options that the voters might approve. You know, we can do a lot of financial analysis to tell the council how much money the city needs to continue its operations, but if the voters aren't the least bit interested in providing that revenue, then it's, it's kind of a waste of time. So then, we'd, the, need to, once the council decides what the question is to put on the ballot, it has to be adopted by resolution. That ballot question language then has to go to the county and the state, and then finally, to the voters. Now, this, initially, when I was doing my research, I thought that in order to levy a tax in the next fiscal year, it had to be approved in this calendar year. I don't think that's the case, which is good, because we're running out of time to put something on the November ballot. It's not impossible, but we would need to get our ducks in a row in short order in order to put something on the November ballot. But it may be possible to put it on the February or May 2011 ballot, and if it's approved, then levy the tax in July, when fiscal year 2012 begins. So that's my report on the, the city's long-term financial plan and the, the millage options that I've been able to... I've been able to investigate up to this point, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Bob, I guess, just to sort of bottom-line it, if we don't raise the millage rate, we have to cut 95 percent of personnel to balance the budget.
Yes, let me restate that. If the voters don't increase the millage rate, the council would have to reduce personnel costs by 95 percent.
So essentially, by reducing personnel costs by 95 percent, we're out of business.
That doesn't make sense, though. 95 percent doesn't make sense. That means everybody's fired.
Yeah, yeah, that means, pretty much, there's...
Doesn't make, doesn't seem to make sense to me, but...
Well, like I said, the city's fixed costs are going to become a larger and larger portion of the budget, if the revenue doesn't increase. So in three years, the city's disposable income might be...
When you say disposable income, that refers to money to pay firefighters and police officers.
Absolutely. Money's for current services, to fund departments, personnel, could be as little as $7 million. So forget the 95 percent figure, if that's confusing. Think about having just $7 million to spend to fund...
Everything.
Whatever services...
So to pay for the George Kuhn drain, to pay for retirement benefits.
No, just general fund services, police, fire, recreation.
Okay, but seven and a half million, Bob, is not 5 percent of our current budget, which is 17, 18 percent, million?
Correct.
Okay, so help me out again, I don't quite get how you...
95 percent.
Get to 90... 95 percent, when you say 95 percent, what is the dollars and cents amount that you're referring to?
I don't have that at my fingertips. If it makes, if, forget about the 95 percent.
I think it's got to be a mistake.
That number may be a mistake. I'll go back and look at where that number came from. But think about having $7 million to spend to run, to fund all the city's general fund operations. Like I said, the net cost of the police department this year is 6.5. So that means no more fire department, no more recreation, no more city hall, which, what we do in city hall is basically paid for, at this point, by other funds and other revenue sources.
So what is the model, I mean, I say this tongue-in-cheek, because I know it's not true, but the state of Michigan must surely have a contingency plan in place for cities that just no longer can fund their basic operations. What happens if, in fact, we don't get above that trend line? If we don't get to the point where expenditures, revenues meet or exceed expenditures, and we burn through our general fund?
Well, just look at what's happened to the Detroit Public Schools, City of Hamtramck, City Highland Park, E-course. It's emergency financial management. That's the city's Plan B, is to send somebody in to mop up the mess, and they don't bring any additional revenue with them.
But I mean, but if we've already cut, if we've been responsible and made those cuts, and there's not, you know, I get that for communities or governmental bodies that don't make the cuts, but if we've already cut, let's say that we do reduce down to $7 million, and this, you know, the picture keeps getting worse. What then? We just declare bankruptcy, void out all our collective bargaining agreements, all our, you know, post-retirement, post-benefits, and...
Well, it...
Just active, just providing services now?
If you keep making the tough choices and keep balancing the budget, then you don't declare bankruptcy. You just become the city council of a smaller and smaller city government. But the point at which the council stops balancing the budget, then emergency financial management becomes an option. There is a chapter of the bankruptcy code that cities would be eligible for, but my understanding is that no city in the state of Michigan's ever gone through it, and it would actually require state approval, and state approval seems unlikely, because it would hurt the state's own bond rating if they allowed a political subdivision such as a city to go through bankruptcy.
Let's let other council members ask questions as well.
All right, and then, oh, go ahead.
We're looking at, in the year that just ended, we cut three, roughly $3 million from our budget. It was a huge amount, and caused a lot of distress and upsetness. We're looking, I think, at next year, another $3 million, is that...
Well, under the best-case scenario, it would be 3.9 million a year over the next three years.
Next year, another 3.9 million.
Oh, absolutely, yep. What we went through last year will look good compared to what we go through next year and the years ahead.
I just want to confirm, and I think everyone knows this, but in case anyone out there still doesn't understand or doesn't believe it, this is accurate. Every city's going through it. I attended the county's budget, three-year budget session last week, and the trend lines are exactly the same, and it has to do with state revenue sharing and property values. The property value situation is that our homes keep declining every year, and it's been going on for three years, and it's going to keep going on for a while. Lest anyone get too scared, though, of what we were just talking about, we're not near bankruptcy, the city's not going into foreclosure. We're going to figure this out. So what questions would council members like to ask? Sorry, go ahead.
Just a couple. Bobby, have any figures on if there was a special police and fire millage, any figures? How many mills we might need to...
For retirement?
Well, the city currently spends more on police and fire than it collects in property tax revenue. So right now, we levy 14 and a half mills, and we need 15 mills to fund police and fire.
Okay, okay. And, all right, so, and how about our investments? How are they doing?
Well, our investments are subject to...
Right. I mean, I can recall from the budget hearings, I know you gave us a synopsis of what they were doing at that time.
Well, there, we collect interest revenue on some short and medium-term investments, but, you know, it's...
We're picking a couple of percent.
Yeah.
It's negligible.
No.
It's like what anyone might get at home on their savings account.
Probably not, yes, yeah.
It's almost, it's an insult, it's one of these. Do we, Bob, know what other cities are doing? And I know that's a complicated question, but all cities are involved in this, some are in better shape than others. Our neighbors, you know, around us are all in different shape, but Royal Oak had to cut, I think, $6 million this year, so they may have to cut another $6 million next year. And Troy, we know Troy attempted a millage, and it went down to round, burning defeat.
Yep. Ironically, a lot of other cities in the state are doing things Ferndale's already done.
Right.
They are reducing their personnel costs by reducing their retirement costs. The city of Ferndale started moving from a defined benefit pension system to a defined contribution pension system in 1997, when the state of Michigan did. So on the expenditure side, other communities are doing a lot of what Ferndale's already done. On the revenue side, folks are putting millage proposals on the ballot, and you mentioned the failure in Troy. There was one that was narrowly approved in Bloomfield Township. The Village of Beverly Hills is putting one on this November. The city of Wathrup Village approved one last May. Now, in Troy, you're seeing folks who are petitioning for a special library millage, which, again, we've already done.
Hazel Park passed a small increase a couple of years ago.
Hazel Park did a heavily override a few years ago.
All right, what, before we get into, I'm sorry, councilwoman, before we start talking about maybe options and where people think they are, are there any other questions about the presentation first, including from the audience? I didn't mean to interrupt you, councilwoman.
No, I just wanted to say, I thought it was an excellent presentation, and your analysis has been very good. The graphs, you can't really argue against those graphs. They're stark.
Yeah, we're hoping for the best-case scenario, but even that is bad news. Mayor, did you want to say something?
I had a couple of questions. First of all, relating to special millages, whether they be a senior millage, or if you specialize a police and fire millage and so forth, is that plus whatever the standard millage of the city is, or does that limit the city? For example, if we had a 15-mill police millage, does that limit the city to five mills balanced, or does the city still have the option for the 20 mills in its operating budget?
Well, the short answer is it depends. Any special millage has to be done by charter amendment. So the charter amendment could structure that millage in any way. So a special-purpose millage implemented by charter amendment would not have to impact the city's operating millage, so the city could continue to levy 14 and a half mills for general operating purposes, plus a new special-purpose millage if the charter was amended, so that could be new revenue in addition to what the city's already collecting.
Is that the type of charter amendment you need? That's a very functional change. Would you need a charter committee, have to elect a charter committee to redo that, or is that something that could be done by council?
My understanding is that two-thirds vote of the council is required to put the amendment on the ballot, and then it's a simple majority of the voters to approve. It's not the same process as the Charter Commission rewriting the entire charter.
And then, if we, would we have the charter amendment on, say, the November election, and then a February election to, you know, to fund it, essentially?
You could do it that way, or you could have both questions.
What happens if you pass the millage rate but not the amendment?
Then it wouldn't work. Wouldn't work that way.
Well, and I think part of your question, I had the same question, Mayor Porter, and there are several things that do function outside of that 20-mill cap, one of those being a fire authority, which we are hopefully hedging closer and closer to, but like the city manager said, unfortunately, probably won't come together. You know, it's been worked on for years. We've pared it down, so we've got sort of fewer players at the table to hopefully move some things along faster, but wouldn't necessarily come together in time for next year's budget cycle. But that, for example, would be outside of that 20-mill cap.
Well, and that 20-mill cap, that is a charter 20-mill cap. There is a state constitution 50-mill cap, so the city has potentially 30 mill, 30 additional mills, I believe, that it could levy if the charter was amended to provide for special-purpose millages. I don't see the city going as high as 50 mills, but there is a limitation in the state constitution to that effect.
Right, next question was, which shows a lot of dollars over the next three years, and that's really the actuarial figures you're talking about in the police and fire pension. That was an overfunded pension for some time, and as you indicated, we had not had to pay into that fund. Now, obviously, that depends a lot on the stock market. We took a serious hit when the stock market went down. A great percentage of that market has been recouped, plus, since that time, we've had more people going into a defined contribution program rather than this defined benefit pension. So my question would be, that increase seems a touch dramatic to me. Is there, do we have the actuarial figures as to what's actually transpired on that?
No, the figures referred to in the presentation were provided after the market crashed and before it had rebounded. The market certainly has regained a lot of ground, but not all of its ground, and we haven't had a lot of folks in that pension system leave it in the last year. All the employees that were in that pension system have either retired or are thus drawing on it, in the case of Chief Schmidt, or are still employed here and are still accruing benefits. So I would expect when the next actuarial valuation comes out, that we may see a reduction in those contributions, but I don't have any reason to believe, at this point, that those contributions are going to go back to zero.
Yeah, but we had a full report, councilman asked for that, and it's going to be going up. It may not be that stark, but those numbers are going to keep going up.
Just one last comment. By the way, Huntington Woods is 20 mills now. They did that the year before. Old political desirous, I, slowly. So as a result of watching the financial situation in our city and so forth, I was looking at some of the millage rates and based it on our current values and so forth. Four mills is approximately $2.4 million. Four and a half mills, $2.7. But when you boil it down, in talking to members of the insurance industry, what I found was this, and I think this is something we have to think about, if we talk to the people in the city about millages, and that's the fact that for an average, average home in the city of Ferndale, if that's still around 50, 50,000, you're looking at a $200 cost in millage at four mills. In talking to different members of the insurance industry, I found that a loss in rating in our fire department, if crime should increase as a result of lack of our ability to patrol because of cuts in our staff and so forth there, you could easily be paying that 200 or 300 or 400 dollars to your insurance agent. And personally, I would rather walk out the door and know that there's a police officer and a fire truck there, rather than subsidize my fire.
And those are the kind of arguments we would obviously be using if we get to a point. Let's move to at least a few moments where folks share what they think of the presentation and where they might be. Is that, or what is your request tonight from us?
Well, my request is to at least get in some kind of informal direction, or perhaps a formal vote, as to which options this council would like staff to pursue further and examine further, and what kind of timeframe the council is interested in moving, whether it's the November election, or the February or May election, and we could discuss the pros and cons of those, if you wish. If there is a sense of urgency that the council would like to move ahead quickly, then I would ask that you provide me with authorization to have some survey research done. My concern about the survey timing is that, you know, we can all sit up here and kind of think, talk about how many mills we think the voters might approve and for what purposes, but I'd really be more comfortable with some data as a starting point to see, you know, what is public opinion, so that we don't waste any time and energy with a ballot proposal that's doomed from the start.
Well, that can be discussed, I'm sorry, councilwoman, go ahead.
I had a few questions before we go into the millage. Can you address our general fund? I've heard people say that we have approximately, I mean, we do have about $2.9 million in our general fund, and is there, I'm sorry...
General fund balance?
General fund balance, thank you. And that perhaps that we could augment some of our deficit with general fund dollars. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, you know, this is an issue that seems to have been misunderstood by some during the budget process. The city has millions of dollars in the bank, literally, tens of millions of dollars, most of which is dedicated for specific purposes. It's in the pension fund, or it's dedicated for a road fund that the city cannot legally use on general fund services. The general fund balance, or as of last June 30th, June 30th, 2009, the amount of money that the city had cash on hand that could have arguably spent, been spent on general fund services, would have been about $6.9 million. It's less today, because we went over budget in this fiscal year that just ended. We funded some early retirements and other things. So the city does have a rainy day fund, and the city could certainly spend it. But if, I backed up to this chart, and what this chart shows is, again, our revenue trend over time, and our revenue's going down, and it's going, and it's going to stay down forever, basically, what you're seeing with those trend lines, those forecasts on the bottom. Now, what we see here with the heavily override is that if revenue went up, there's a little triangle there, basically, there's kind of a bump in the road, where revenue went down, and then revenue went back up. Now, that little triangle, that bump in the road, is a hole that the city could fill with cash. The city could say, okay, it's raining, let's spend, let's fill that hole with money. But if there's no heavily override, if there's no relief in sight, if revenues are going to continue to go down for the next several years, then the city doesn't have enough cash to spend to fill that bump in the road. And we talked a little bit about that during the budget process. I have some other graphs in a presentation that I gave at that time that shows the tens of millions of dollars in revenue that's going to be lost, and the decades that it's going to take to get it back. So yes, the city has cash on hand, we've been spending it to soften the blow and reduce our workforce, but we do not have enough cash on hand to stave off cuts indefinitely.
Thanks, Bob.
And what about school district with its millages? Are they ending? Do we need to think about that as a possibility, take into consideration as we think about millages for the city?
None that I am aware of. I looked at the city's total tax rate over the last... I looked at the city's total tax rate over the last five years, and it's been very stable. There's been very little change in the city's total tax rate in the last several years, just a mil or a fraction of a mil here or there.
But Jay Marie could tell us if there's any, I don't mean to interrupt, but there may be some millages that are going to start to taper off or end in the future. We should take that into consideration. The one that, the bond, the street, the street and sewer bond that we did, that may be ending at some point.
Oh, yeah.
We should probably get input from Jay Marie.
Yep.
And I wanted to remind you all that in August, we typically have our joint council meeting with the school board. Maybe Cheryl Lynn could make a call over next week to Jackie Stroker or the office.
I'm not sure that happens.
To see if they want to schedule. I think we do want to schedule that joint meeting. We could ask them, you know, together, what they have in mind in terms of millages and stuff. That's a really good question, Melanie, because it's, the taxpayer looks at the total picture when he or she gets their tax bill, but it's not just us, the county and the trash and the water and the schools.
Those are the questions I have for now, so.
You asked a series of questions, Bob, and my only worry about that is in the terms of the process of the five council members here plus the audience, is if you ask us a series of questions, I don't know if you're going to get good answers or direction. Do you want to break down into pieces what you'd like to hear from us in terms of our direction, or?
Well, the basic questions are which millage options is the council most interested in examining further, and when would you potentially like to put them on the ballot? November, February, or May?
Yeah, again, to put this in some sort of a process so that it's not just a free-for-all, that there's five of us here, unless you object, why don't we take one at a time? And then I assume you're also going to ask us about a survey. You talked about a survey.
Yeah, if the council is interested in moving forward on the November ballot, then we need to do so quickly, and I think we should do a survey in short order.
Unless there's objection, does anyone object if we take a stab at that first question, which was what sort of, if, assuming you're interested in a millage, and you might want to share whether or not you think now's the time or not? Which kind you'd like to, go ahead.
I'm sorry, we heard several times during the budget process what everybody's in favor of, and that's police and fire millage. Everybody I talked to is adamant about that. They're willing to vote for that positively. So I would have to say I'm in favor of a police and fire dedicated millage. And telephone survey? No, I'm not in favor of that. There's other ways to get public input.
So Mike, are you saying you want to do the millage for the retirement system or a charter amendment, and then also some separate millage?
Yeah, the retirement system's a little complicated, isn't it? Yeah. That would take a lot of research and a lot of time and money.
So you're saying a dedicated millage that requires a charter amendment? Is that correct? All right, and let's hold off on the survey. And then time-wise, are you interested in this fall, which means we kind of move quickly?
Well, I want it done and done right. Well, I'll leave it up to the city manager.
You're open to the timing. Do you mind if we?
I concur with Mike about I want it done right. However, I think, I believe for the next, we would have to approve by the next city council meeting what would go on the ballot for November, and I'm concerned that's not enough time to actually get it right. So I tend to favor for a February millage in order to figure this out. And I'm also, would like to explore another option in replace of the telephone poll. I think we can achieve public input with perhaps looking at some, getting some tax experts to help us in some way. That would be a reduced cost. I know other cities have tapped into these resources, and I can share them with the city manager when I'm done. And perhaps that would help augment Dan's work, because I know this is pretty complicated stuff, to help us narrow our options, right? So when I look at how many mils should be levied, I would really like to have the, how much do we want to raise over a period of time? And have that option in front of me to say, well, I think council believes this is the best option to put forward and for the public to react to, rather than have a range of eight to 10 options, please give us a response on these, because it's a pretty complicated taxes, a pretty complicated process. And so I feel like if someone called me up on the phone and asked me in three minutes to give my opinions on, you know, as I got home from work and was cooking dinner, you know, going through, it would just be hard to get my head around all these different variables and layers to these choices. So I prefer a more open approach to looking at this.
Councilman?
I guess I have to disagree with Mike a little bit. We need to have a millage that passes. Certainly, I think folks, you know, two of the highest, most valued services are police and fire. Perhaps they're the most. I'd say that they probably are. But I'm a little bit concerned with whether or not that would actually pass at the levels that we would need in order to fund those departments, given the current state of negotiations with the police and fire unions. If this looks in, looks like a millage that's established simply so that the police and fire unions don't have to sacrifice on their wages and healthcare benefits, then I think it could go down in flames despite the enormous goodwill that those departments have built up over the years. So it's not clear to me that a police and fire millage dedicated to that is the best at this immediate time to do, although I heard the same thing that Mike did during the budget process. So I think for that reason, we need to do a little bit more sophisticated questioning of the voters to see what's going to pass, because as I see it, if we rush and get something on the ballot in November, we might get two bites at the apple to get something passed, and then something, and then if both of those fail, or if we only get one on the ballot and one of them fails, then city's going to be very different this time next year. And that's not a risk that I'm willing to take. So I think we have to do something in November. I think we got to get some sort of sophisticated questionnaire or feedback from the citizens as to what they would accept in light of the current circumstances and not simply in the abstract. I think in the abstract, police and fire dedicated millage would pass overwhelmingly. There'll be anti-tax forces out there campaigning against it, and I would suspect that one of the strategies they would use is say that this is simply to maintain above-market wages for police and fire, which could send it down to failure. So I'd say poll November election, you know, something on the November ballot, and then if it fails, try again in February.
Is that even a possibility?
Is what a possibility?
At the city manager, I mean, would the timing, in order to get something on the February ballot, wouldn't we need to get it approved in November so we wouldn't necessarily know that something had failed?
Yeah, you'd have to have the contingency plan already underway in order to know the day after the election, the November election, to move ahead with the February. I don't want to sit here and tell you it's impossible, but it would be difficult.
Are we still doing February elections? I thought we were reducing the number of elections. Cheryl Lynn?
Through election law, a February election is permissible, four election dates per year. We may, depending on whether or not the constitutional convention is approved by the voters in November, we would most likely have a February election anyway to elect delegates to that convention.
Okay, appreciate that. Kate, Councilwoman Baker, do you want to, and I could share mine next if you want, but do you want to share your thoughts on which kind of millage you lean towards and when?
It's something I've been thinking about through the entire budget process, and I've said it, you know, over and over during the budget process, that this is where I ultimately saw us heading, was that we are used to a level of service in Ferndale and proud of the services that we provide in Ferndale, and generally willing to pay for those services. So this is not somewhere that I was surprised to end up, and I thanked the city manager earlier for his in-depth research into this. This is something I've kind of been hounding him about, and I'm glad that we're working on it this evening. The two things that I see going hand in hand, looking a little bit further out, is we've done these three-year projections, and we know what we're working on with our neighbors in terms of collaborations. Because the vast majority of our general fund budget is personnel, and the vast majority of that pool of personnel are public safety personnel, to me, a heavily override coupled with perhaps in 2012, perhaps in 2013, I would hope in 2012, the beginnings of a fire authority, even if it's just two cities or just three cities, and adding other cities over time, well-crafted language to put those two things together would be my preference, which would mean probably not in November. I really like Melanie's idea of having some professional outside tax advice. She's mentioned several firms that she's worked with through the Michigan Suburbs Alliance who've worked with other cities to help them craft their plan, you know, be it a contingency plan, which Scott just talked about, or, you know, sort of the best initial plan to go out and make sure that all of our bases are covered the first time out.
So did you say an overly, a heavily override millage, general millage, but not in November? And did you also say down the road in a year to continue working on the?
I would hope that we would be able to move forward with a fire authority in fiscal 2012, which would be the next vote, and it would be outside of that 20 mil cap, which means our police department would be able to continue to draw resources from that heavily override, and our fire department would be funded through our fire authority.
As I suspected, we have five folks who all have five various, and there is a way to get to where we need to get, but I actually agree with parts of what several folks have said. I don't think we should rush now to try to get something on the November ballot, because November's not very far away. And I'm glad Mayor Porter is here, because Mayor Porter, back in the mid-'90s?
Mm-hmm.
The big street and bond issue was a huge, huge issue. And the voters of Ferndale normally, almost always, will vote in support of taxing themselves. As a matter of fact, I've lived here 22 years, and the voters have never turned down a request that I can remember.
Once when I was a kid.
They've also passed some pretty nice school bonds and the library bond. However, I'm not going to in any way support a telephone survey, because I don't think they're very, they're very good at what they purport to do. Most telephone surveys don't even include cell phones, and most people don't use landlines anymore. But the whole purpose, if we, if we as a city and a council and staff wish to pass a millage, we can do it, but it involves education, it involves bringing the whole community together, it involves a blue ribbon panel, ministers, teachers, politicians, business owners, and if we get motivated, police officers and citizens, we can do it. So to take a snapshot right now of what people are thinking, I think, doesn't give us any information as to what we may need to do in six months or a year. If the city of Ferndale is united and decides that we need to raise our millage, we can do it in a united way, but we would all have to work for it. I would be reluctant right now, because I agree with Councilman, sorry, Councilman Galloway, in that until there are some substantial union concessions, I don't think the voters are going to support any increase. The voters in Ferndale largely get it, and they read the papers, and they know what happens. They know what's going on in Royal Oak and Berkeley and Warren and Sterling Heights and Oak Park and all the other cities. We're all taking pay cuts. We're all seeing our pensions be reduced. We're all seeing our healthcare costs go up. And there's no way, at least I can go to the voters and say, we need to raise your taxes because we need to make sure that everybody gets a very cushy pension and a very cushy health plan that was really good in the '90s but is unsustainable in 2010. So I agree with you, councilman, that we've got to get some union concessions. Then we can all join together and say, now, let's fight for the city. So I tend to go with a general millage. I think it's cleaner. I would prefer to wait until next year. I tend to not like February elections, because only about 14 people vote in February, but it's the middle of winter. But if the word is out there and we're united, then I think we could turn out, turn out the populace in February or...
So I appreciate being able to share my thoughts on that. Secondary thoughts?
Yeah. I like the city manager's approach to solicit feedback from people, and I think that needs to be something that we incorporate into another approach that we decide on, and so I value that, and I think that's important to incorporate in. And I know that's what Mr. Brunner's attempt was, to get that feedback. So I hope that whatever we do, that we include that as well. And I wanted to concur about the comments on a special millage for the police and fire as well. I mean, I've heard a ton of comments from residents already that, you know, half of our staff at the city has already taken their self-sacrifice, their shared sacrifice in their 5% wage cuts, and it's difficult. And I know council has said that we value equity here in the shared sacrifice, and right now, we only have it by half of us. And I see all the other cities around us taking that shared sacrifice. It is unfortunate that we have to ask for it, and I've said that from the beginning of this. None of us want to be asking for this. We just can't afford what we used to be able to afford, in that local government is going under a major restructuring, and we're trying to survive and plan for the next three years. So that's my comments on that.
Thank you. Any other further thoughts? I don't know if you're getting consensus or not, Bob.
Well, what I'm hearing is that February or May, probably not November, which is good from a, from a planning perspective, because the whole point of bringing this survey forward at this point was that if there was a consensus that the council wanted to go ahead with the November ballot, that we had a lot of work to do in a very short order. So working towards February or May, I can now go back, do additional research on both the heavily override and the special purpose millage options. We can flesh those both out a little bit further, come back to the council with a little bit more information, and continue to refine these options as we go.
Mr. Brunner, I just, again, not wanting to frighten the people watching, I mean, everyone knows the bad news, but you said at one point that we'll never recover, and I just don't like to use the word never. The county has projected a budget through 2016, and it looks grim, but that doesn't, that's still not never. It might be ever for me, but not for young people out there. I think we will recover, and we are smart people, and we will figure out how to deal with this. But at some point, our home values are going to stabilize, unless everyone gets free houses. But I think there is light at the end of the tunnel. The economy at some point is going to improve, and there will be brighter days down the road. And I don't mean to always be negative on these surveys and stuff. I think it's valuable to know where people are. I just, I'm not sure that a telephone survey is the route to go. And I also, again, think that we shouldn't be too worried about what people think right now. Most people are going to say, don't raise my taxes. Most people are scared to death of where their next paycheck is coming from, and we have to be cognizant that 10 to 15% of the people in Ferndale don't have jobs right now. So I think, I just caution that we be careful, we go slow, we know exactly what we need to do, and that we can go incrementally to get where we need to go. And then we can sell what we need to sell to the voters in terms of how to keep strong police, strong fire, strong city government, without breaking the bank. Anything else? Anyone? Yes, ma'am.
Dawn Pazinski, Ferndale resident. I told a friend who couldn't be here tonight that I would read his thoughts on this. So this is from Tom Gagne. He said, I'm unable to attend the meeting tonight, but I'm curious if the city manager will make available online any presentation materials for them for item 7B, presentation of the long-term financial plan and consideration of telephone survey research contract. Mr. Brunner usually creates some valuable graphical analysis. Also, the memo attached to the agenda does not indicate what options may be asked, what questions may be asked in the survey, what type of answers will be solicited, how many voters will be surveyed. the survey, what type of answers will be solicited, how many voters will be surveyed, who will participate in its design, or whether council will collaborate with citizen groups about millage options. A phone survey like the mail-in one last year can easily be engineered to support a prearranged outcome. I would prefer," and this is Tom's email, and I assume many other residents would as well, "multiple hearings on the subject. Perhaps as options are discussed, a citizen group may petition for a millage that, due to its grassroots nature, may have a better chance of passing than one proposed by a council that favored spending millions on new buildings and the commensurate $100,000 in consulting fees." That's from Tom Gagne. I want to say that I agree with a lot of what he says. I think a phone survey, and even hiring tax experts, is like spending our money to find out how to raise our taxes. It's like, this isn't a good time to do that, so.
I would just like to make one comment. The survey was going to probably cost between $6,000 to $12,000, and I believe that we would be able to spend less than probably the $6,000 just to getting some additional feedback from other sources, and probably some in-kind donation from these sources as well. So, we're looking at to even spend less than what the survey was allowed for.
I think that's what all the residents want to hear, just be really conservative, fiscally conservative, because a lot of us just don't have any more to give. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. And in answer to Tom, we've already actually answered that. Mr. Brunner will put it on the website, and of course, anyone can watch the cable show if they want to see this show. It'll be available for the library, and then they're written.
It's online now, too, don't forget.
It's streaming.
Those of us who are on the show, I think, forget that it's on the city's website, and folks can watch it at home in their pajamas 24/7.
The show, oh, see, I didn't know that. And then, it's written, it's also at the library, or will be at the library on paper. Yes, sir.
Just one quick. You brought up the millage issues back in the '90s and so forth. I wanted to point out that twice prior to that, the city tried to pass an infrastructure millage, and they failed both times.
Right.
And I think what you're talking about, putting things off a little bit now, that's the difference. This, the last millage, we had time to bring people together and to properly educate the public. And the public's been properly educated in your city, you're right, that's right. They have supported things.
You are exactly right. And you were a co-chair of that, were you not, of that blue ribbon citizens that got it passed a third time? Yes, sir. Tim?
Please forgive me, it may sound ignorant. I really don't understand everything in the processes. I'm listening to people talking about investments and different things, and trying to generate money. And from my way of thinking, I mean, the greatest investment is downtown Ferndale. And I keep thinking to myself, I mean, I've watched you talk and deal with Dino's and Club Bart, and basically, you have the power to wave a magic wand and achieve a goal that most people would take years to accomplish. And I keep thinking, I mean, why don't you invest in downtown? Everybody's coming here and building restaurants, and they're making money. Has it ever occurred to the city that maybe because of these new times and different situations, you're in a unique situation, where maybe you start your own restaurant that is run by the city, for the city, it's built with people who volunteer their time and their services, and it's an opportunity to get police officers and firemen to help and work and build for the city. And take a small space. I'm a contractor by trade. Chinese carryouts make $20,000, $30,000 in a week, just handing out Chinese food. I mean, you have a vibrant downtown. I'm just throwing something out there. Maybe it doesn't work. I don't know what's involved. You have a very smart man who's the city attorney. Bob Brunner, I mean, his presentations and the way that he sets things up, I mean, I have faith in him. I mean, Mr. Covey, you're a very likable man. I don't see why you can't sell it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Mr. Brunner, do you have enough that you need tonight?
Yes, thanks for that.
You're not asking, by the way, for a vote on the survey. There is no contract, there is no proposal.
No.
That's why Mr. Gagne didn't see one. You're not asking for a vote tonight.
No.
Seeking direction.
Right. If the direction had been "Go for November," it'd be a different conversation. But, I agree with the comments that if we're going to do this, you know, we should do it right, and that probably means taking more time.
Appreciate it.
Than doing it November.
I appreciate it. We're going to move along on the agenda then. Madam Clerk, is the, oh, do we have a Item B as a void?
Yes, we are. Consideration of Items pulled from the consent agenda.
Do you mind going ahead, Kate, in introducing and sharing what your thoughts were?
Absolutely. The Millennial Mayor's Congress, which the City of Ferndale has participated in since its inception in 2009, has put together their first rounds of recommendations. This is a regional organization. There are dozens of cities in our region who are passing very similar resolutions this month, specifically regarding energy usage, and a commitment to do our absolute best to find some measurable ways to reduce energy usage throughout our city. The most measurable being the properties that we control, and the things that we control as a city government, but also to encourage our residents to reduce their energy usage as well. Our millennial representative, who was actually just elected to chair the Millennial Mayor's Congress, Brendan Frey, had just a couple of suggestions, corrections, which he emailed to me. So, for the city clerk, in the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph, that begins, "Mayor Covey and Councilmember Baker are the city's appointed representatives." Actually, Mayor Covey is the city's appointed representative, and Councilmember Baker is the city's appointed alternate to the Millennial Mayor's Congress.
Okay.
The other, there's just one other. I'm sorry, let me just look at my email here. In the section that begins, "It is further resolved," I'm not Millennial Representative Baker, so we'll just change that wording a little bit. Brendan's suggestion was that it should read, "The city council instructs," and I can forward you this email as well if you'd like, "the city manager and the Chair of the Environmental Sustainability Commission to work with Mayor Covey, Councilmember Baker, Millennial Representative Frey," and then the rest, as it currently reads. And those are the only changes. Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Kate.
And thank you to Brendan for catching those. It's nice to have another set of attorneys' eyes looking at these.
Absolutely. He's doing a great job, and congratulations to him being elected Chair of the entire Congress.
Chair.
With that, I'll take that as a motion also from you, Councilwoman, to adopt that resolution. Is there a second? Support. Councilman Galloway seconds the motion by Councilwoman Baker with the corrections that she made. Discussion. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Leth, Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, passes unanimously. The next item is council liaison reports. Are there any items that folks wish to comment on?
I do have an update, actually, from the Millennial Mayor's Congress. When our representative, Brendan Frey, was elected to chair the Millennial Mayor's Congress, I was part of the group of elected officials and millennial representatives that was elected to the Executive Committee, because apparently I can't say no when people ask me to do things.
Oh.
So, I will.
We have problems.
What? Oh, don't turn it into that. The meeting notices will still come to the mayor as our official representative by their charter, although I do plan to do my best to attend all of the Executive Committee meetings.
Super.
The Congress also has a survey that they're interested in getting feedback from people of all ages, but particularly looking at people under the age of 40. It is on their website, which I believe is millennialmayerscongress.org. It's been emailed around by several organizations. Melanie's nodding, I think I got it right. It will help us determine and better advocate for the interests of sort of the next generation of Michigan residents.
Okay. So, folks listening tonight might want to look at that and take that survey.
Absolutely.
Again, it's. And then find the survey in there.
I believe it's on the homepage.
All right. It's, we're too old. Mike and Scott.
Oh, we want everyone, but definitely.
Oh, okay, so we can take it, too. Thank you for that. Any other liaison updates? Are we to count the council, then?
We certainly are, Your Honor.
All right. Chief, anything else from the police department?
I supplied each of you with a summary of a crime report for the month of June 2010, with a comparison for the month of June 2009. Councilwoman Piana has asked that I do this on a consistent basis. I intend to do so. I would also like to include this on to our website, so this, along with the maps that you'll see, that have a, like a pin map representation of the crimes that you see that are represented on the two front pages. Significant changes from '09 to '10, there's a lot of stability, as you'll see, and there's been a lot of reductions. You'll see that assaultive crimes are down approximately 18%. Larceny from vehicles is down about 52%. Larceny, all others, I'm sorry, automobile theft has been down 71% in comparison from the month of last year, and drug offenses are down about approximately 41%. There is a significant increase in residential BNEs of over 101% in the month of June. The numbers themselves, I know that's scary when you say 101%, but remember that the numbers that we're talking about are 50, or 21 to 52. But, that is a significant increase. A lot of those crimes tend to be, right now, the homes that are vacant, and the, that are being stripped for copper, and that, we have made some headwaves with the rest on some of those crimes, so we're hoping that July will be, will again stabilize like the rest of the crime statistics have. Is there any questions on that?
No. I really, do you mind if I step in? I really appreciate you sharing these statistics, because I know our residents are concerned about crime, in particular, how does that directly relate to the potential reductions in our police and fire department. And so, I really support making data-driven decisions. And so, when you say that the 101% increase in BNEs is really over onto the vacant, foreclosed homes, that helps the police department and the code enforcement work together on tackling that problem. And if I recall, isn't there a foreclosure task force, or was going to be?
Abandoned home task force.
Abandoned home task force. And I don't know if that has made any movement since the last discussion, but there are some unique solutions going on, and a lot of our cities and police, and code enforcement, and planning, really working together in a more collaborative, deliberative way. And I hope that you'll explore those to help deal with the copper. I know every city that has a significant foreclosure rate is dealing with BNE and copper thefts.
Yes, we are involved with the copper theft task force with surrounding communities. We do collaborate with the CDS Department with, they do provide us with data of the locations of the homes that are both foreclosed and vacant. So, we are working collaboratively with other departments on that issue.
Yeah.
I guess, you know, this was really encouraging to me, Chief. You know, this is set up, if people look it up online, or at the library, or wherever it might be, you've got year-over-year comparisons. So, we have, you know, assault offenses in June of 2009, and then same measure in June of 2010. In almost every single category, the dots, or the number of incidences in 2010 is fewer than, you know, 2009. And for those of us on the south end of town, who sometimes feel as though perhaps crime is worse in our, in our area, it's really not based on this. It looks like, you know, a lot of these events are sort of scattered pretty evenly throughout the city.
And this is the type of information that, given some time, we're going to find a way to publish it on the website, so it can be accessible to the public, so they can see these type of things in real time, and publish them in a monthly, in a monthly way. Although, we haven't quite figured it out yet, and we haven't had a lot of time to do so, but as time goes on, we hope to publish that information on a monthly basis.
And my final comment is that I really, I can't tell you how much I appreciate this, because council makes better, helps make better decisions on behalf of the police department when we have data. And that only helps you.
Oh, moving on with more data. We have, I come to find out that I'm responsible for giving you quarterly updates on the parking revenue and the parking tickets issued. So, I learned that today, so I quickly put this information together. We did a comparison on last quarter in 2009, the May through, April, May, and June of 2009 comparatively to April, May, of June of this year. There has been an increase of about $31,000 in revenue from parking meters. And we have also increased the number of parking tickets, metered parking tickets from 2009 to 2010, from $3,614 to $4,538, an increase of 934. So, I can provide that in writing as well, if you so choose, but I just got that information today.
Chief, it's your call, but you could do that for us, you know, through the email or through your, if you're going to, are you going to do a weekly, any kind of an email update, or a weekly report, or a monthly report for us?
We are, I'm working on that, Your Honor.
Let you decide, you know. That kind of stuff can come to us. We had heard, and maybe you can just check for a future meeting, that the ticket writing was actually way down just in the last few weeks.
The month of June, it did go way down, and has began to come and stabilize again. Of course, now that's going to be impacted by the number of officers as well. So, the measure will be tickets per officer, as opposed to overall per department. So, we're working on comparisons with the city manager's office as well.
Can you let us know, I know you're still getting organized, I had at least one complaint from a person, a resident, about dogs. I think she's worried that without an animal control officer, and we're not quite yet up to speed with our new agency, the nonprofit that's going to work with us. Let us know if there's a plan, or what we're doing in terms of loose dogs, or dogs that are found wandering, or something like that, if there's a.
There, we are handling emergency animal control services at this time. If we have dogs that are nuisance to the neighbors, particularly children, or vicious dogs, of course, we will be handling that. Similar, the same way we would on a weekend or a holiday when they, when we had an animal control officer that was off. But, it is still limited. Angela Potter, who is running the Wags and Wishes operation, she is currently operating at the animal shelter. We are awaiting a formal contract to be written between the city and Wags and Wishes, and we're moving forward with that. But, she, her organization is housing animals, and caring for animals, and rescuing animals at our shelter on a limited basis. So, we are providing some service, but it's basically an emergency.
Appreciate that, Chief. I did speak with Angie yesterday. Anything else? Any questions?
Thank you much.
Thank you, sir. I don't see a fire department representative tonight. I don't see a DPW representative tonight. Sherilyn Tallman, anything from the side?
I just want to encourage residents to get out and vote August 3rd in the primary election.
Very good. Absentee voting is going on now.
Absentee voting is going on now. Contact our office to get your absentee ballot.
Is it too late to register for that election?
It is. The deadline for registration for August has passed. It is not too late to register for November.
Absolutely.
Plan ahead.
Mr. Brunner?
I just wanted to, again, thank city attorney and the city clerk, as well as Ms. Eubanks or Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, for their assistance in putting together the information for tonight's presentation. Hopefully, the financial portions of that presentation, those are things that we can revisit and update a couple of times a year. It's certainly a situation that the city is going to have to monitor for several years to come, and even as we do move forward with a millage proposal. I also, this is the first city council meeting of the new fiscal year. On July 1st, myself and other non-union salaried employees took a 5% pay cut, and I want to make it clear that that was 5% of what we actually made last year. I want to make it clear that that was five percent of what we actually made last year, not five percent of what we were budgeted to make this year. So we didn't raise salaries by two percent and then cut them by five. We actually cut them by five. Not that anybody has, has asked, but some employees have suggested that when I say that we took a pay cut, I should say it's a seven percent pay cut. That's if you include the two percent raise that.
You should have, might have gotten.
We might have gotten and that, and that other employees did get. There are a number of unions who have expired contracts, so they did not receive any raises on July 1st, so their pay is essentially frozen. There are other unions that did receive a, a two percent pay increase. But since the last meeting, the Court Employees Union across the street did negotiate an agreement with the court to actually freeze their pay at fiscal year ending 2010 levels. And they also agreed to the reductions in health insurance and prescription drug insurance that the non-union employees will, will be taking. And in exchange for that pay freeze and those reduction in benefits, the court was able to save enough money to avoid one layoff. And although the, the court is technically the employer, not the city, the city is the funding unit. And so there, those salaries come out of our general fund budget, and this is the first concessionary agreement that's been approved here in Ferndale this year. I, I hope to have an announcement soon about a, another agreement with another union that is in the works, but is, has been pointed out several times, this is going on in a lot of our neighboring communities. And now we are beginning to see some of the unions here in Ferndale come to the table and share in the sacrifices with, with the residents and the, the non-union employees as we try to continue providing services with less revenue. So my thanks to the, to the court employees and the court across the street. I think it's a, a good agreement and a step in the right direction.
And you said a lay, one layoff was called back?
That's right. This is, it's a, it's a small bargaining unit, about a dozen people, so it didn't, it didn't save a ton of money, but it was enough for.
Save one job.
To save one job.
Which is what we've been talking about up here.
All right. Oh, and I, I should also mention, City Hall is going to be closed on Fridays starting this week. And part of what I hope to announce later this week is extending the hours past five so that although we'll be open to the public Monday through Thursday and closed on Friday, we're, we're working with the union that represents City Hall employees to extend public service hours beyond five. Folks are still encouraged to use the Dropbox on the north side of the building, mail your payments. We have new addresses with lock boxes at Comerica in Detroit, so we don't have to handle payment processing here in City Hall anymore with our, our smaller staff. So there are a lot of ways to avoid coming to City Hall, but if you have to, don't come on Friday because we're going to be closed.
Bob, on that, with the tax bills that went out, it indicated that payment was to be made downtown, but it can still be made whether you're making one or eight payments at the Dropbox out here?
Yeah, you can still make them at the Dropbox and we'll send them, we'll send them to Comerica.
But if you're gonna mail them, mail them to Comerica downtown.
Yeah. Yeah, and we have gotten a couple of calls from folks that were concerned. They saw that change of address. They want to make sure it's not some kind of scam or, or anything, and it's not. That, we never know these days. You know, don't send it to Nigeria by any means. There, we have a Dropbox in, in Detroit. That's.
Because our bank is Comerica, is that why?
That's right.
Anything else, Mr. Brunner?
That's all for tonight, Your Honor.
Very good. Mr. Chris.
Very briefly, Your Honor, following up on Mayor Porter's comments about medical marijuana, I just wanted to let council know that I have had an opportunity to meet with Chief as well as CDS Department, have read a large amount of data that addresses the issue, spoken with the county prosecutor with respect to some of her concerns on the issue, and hope to have some recommendations with respect to the issue for council at its next meeting.
Oh, very good. Thanks. Councilwoman.
Yes, I have a few things. I wanted to follow up on a few residents' complaints about exceed a noise downtown, and I've received more than one in the past two weeks, as well as Mrs. Wells, Sherry Wells that came here and voiced her displeasure. I also wanted to say that I've experienced it myself. Last city council meeting, we ended at eleven fifteen, and I was surprised about, on a Monday night at eleven fifteen, the pounding noise coming out of downtown, and we could hear it from outside City Hall. And then on Friday night, my husband and I took an eight and a half mile bike trip through southeast end of Ferndale, crisscrossed a lot of the streets, and we made our way up around ten o'clock at night up the streets. And we were also astounded by some of the outdoor cafe music going on, and we rode up west Saratoga and just to see what it was like, and it's loud. And so I think we need to take a look at our noise ordinance, and I recommend and would ask staff to take a look at it and look at enforcement and the ordinance. I've heard from a few residents that the smoking ban, more people are outside now, so the voices carry into the night air, so it's not necessarily music that is bothering them, and it's not just Rosie O'Grady's anymore, okay? We can't, they have been managing their noise. And so I really think it's the right thing to do, and I would ask that the city manager with staff and the police department enforcement to look at the noise ordinance and come back with some recommendations. Also, I'll be around town this week. I'm doing a complete streets presentation to the DVA and to the senior group on Wednesday. I thought it was today and it wasn't. So I'm also going to be out at the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Committee barbecue tomorrow night, so if anybody would like to come, come have some great barbecue and talk to me about city issues, I'll be there. I also will be at Fido Does Ferndale. I don't have a dog, so if anybody would like to lend me theirs, that'd be great. I'll take him for a walk for a few hours, and then I'll be bringing out my childhood skill, childhood skills of kickball on Saturday, representing the Ferndale Community Foundation against Fern Care. So busy week, and I'll be out and around.
Excellent. Councilman.
Just to, you know, build on, on what Melanie said, when we approved a permit, I forget if it was a special land permit, but for the Bosco, we eliminated any amplified music on that back patio because of some concerns of neighbors behind there. And, you know, I wonder if it's getting to the point now where we just have to eliminate all amplified music, because I don't think we're gonna, at least on outdoor patios, I don't think we're gonna have enforcement levels to make residents in the near downtown area satisfied, and it doesn't seem to have hurt the Bosco's business at all, not having amplified music outdoors. So perhaps a total ban on, you know, would work. We do need to get the abandoned property task force going. A lot of these data points for burglaries, larcenies are in this, you know, are in areas that I know to have a lot of abandoned properties, and that task force needs to be mobilized and see how we can put that to use for citizens' benefits. Finally, since our last meeting, when we delegated some authority to the city manager, there's been a lot of appeal about, a lot of discussion, both in the newspapers and, you know, on websites, about how this delegation of authority was going to make Ferndale not quite as good a city or as effective as, you know, as it has been in the past. And I guess since that time, I've had the, had the opportunity to meet with a couple senior appointees and their lieutenants. And, you know, I really have just the opposite conclusion, you know, the sense that we've got a lot of smart people working for the city, and if everybody's rowing in the same direction, I think we're going to be able to get through this one. It's not going to be the same city as it was five or 10 years ago, but we've got smart people who can, you know, put their heads together and come up with good solutions. If we keep doing things the way we've always done them, though, I, I really am concerned for the future, that if we don't coordinate all of our resources in a unified fashion, that, you know, these, these numbers and these trends and graphs are just too much to overcome. So I'm hopeful that perhaps ordinance number 1094 will lead to a, a better tomorrow rather than these doomsayer, doomsayers predictions.
Very good. Mike? I did, but I think, Mr. Brunner, you just said you're gonna have some news for us regarding unions this week, in hopes?
I, yeah, I hope to have an announcement later this week.
Okay, that was my question, so I'm just gonna hold off. I'll leave that. I haven't. Very good. Mayor Protown Baker?
One of the comments that we heard from a resident tonight was an appeal for creative thinking and overcoming some of the barriers that we find have been put up, you know, between different sides, if you will, even though we're all in the same city and working for the same goal in negotiations. And I, I wanted to, the, the city manager's announcement about the Friday closure is actually, when you know a little bit of the backstory, an example of some of that extremely creative thinking and collaboration between union and non-union staff members here in City Hall. And kudos truly to our city clerk and to her staff, to our Assistant City Manager and her staff for putting their heads together, along with our CDS Department, to think about how their staffs can work together, share their services, and also perhaps if they need to give something back, might get a little bit of a benefit out of it at the same time. So this Friday closure doesn't necessarily mean that there won't be staff here every Friday. The plan, it's not completely finalized yet, but the plan is that rather than just a, a pay cut with, with no benefit to the employee, that every other Friday, our City Hall employees would have a day off. They would work a little bit longer on a few days, they would be here and close on Fridays to catch up on paperwork, and then every other Friday, they would be able to do their own business on their own time. It would function as a pay cut, but rather than just taking a pay cut, they would get a little bit of time in return. Like I said, it's not completely finalized. It's one of the things the city manager, I know, is, is hoping to completely iron out this week, but it is exactly an example of creative collaborative thinking that has come from our city clerk and our other department heads here in City Hall.
Thank you. Real quick, the library opening, which was a temporary opening, was a really nice, pleasant experience. I'm just so impressed with all the hard work that the library board members did, the friends of the library, the folks who worked on the millage, and the board thanked a lot of people. I think they might have left one off, and I just want to recognize and I'm glad he's here tonight, but Mayor Porter, you had a starring role in the very beginning of moving the library to an independent place, I remember, because I was sitting up here when you were mayor. And so a whole lot of folks, like everything that's good in Ferndale, has been done by a coalition and a group of people working together, and just wanted to make sure that Mayor Porter was remembered as one of the leaders in the beginning to move the library and to make it independent, thus it could go to the voters. I've been asked, speaking of millages and taxes, I've been asked by Oakland County to sit on the Citizens Panel to support the Recreation and Parks Millage Renewal, and I've agreed to do that. Never a fan of raising taxes, but usually supportive of renewals. This will be on the ballot. And it's pretty important that we continue to support our county in, in the parks and recreation that it provides, even though we may want to tweak the way that those funds are divided and, and make sure that southeast Oakland County is, is included and that some of those funds come here and, and they don't just all go to, say, golf courses in the north part of the county. I already mentioned the county budget that Brooks Patterson proposed to the council, to the commission last week. The good news is they did, they did demonstrate a three-year balance budget. The bad news is, is that their income is continuing to slide, just like the city's, and their expenses are going up. And in their case, they were able to dip into the rainy day fund or the funds balance and also use some other funds from different departments. But the sign is still on the door, and in 2013, 2014, they're going to have some more decisions to make. The mayor of Lansing is in town Wednesday. On Wednesday afternoon, Burge Venero, who's the mayor of Lansing, will be in downtown Royal Oak. If folks are interested, they can call me for more information. He's going to be, I believe, at a coffee shop right at Main South, south of First Hundred Block of South Main in downtown Royal Oak. And the last thing I want to share is my thought that no good deed ever goes unpunished. In trying to be helpful to a resident last meeting, I suggested, you know, different options on how to ameliorate sound problems in her home. I've suggested to other folks the idea of getting a fan. You know, part of problem solving is to try to figure out ways to, to solve problems and to look at different options. So I have actually made calls to the owner of Rosie O'Grady's, asking him to turn the sound down a little bit at night. Councilwoman Piana's right in that there are now DJs at other clubs playing out in the patio at Club Nine. Como's is notorious for having sound on weeknights. And I do want the residents to know that the police are out there and they do enforce the law. I know because I often get calls when one of the clubs gets a ticket. And so during the Pride event, Club Nine got a ticket for blasting music late at night, and that's as it should be. I would sort of concur with Councilman Galloway in that we may want to re, look at our sound ordinance and see if they're still appropriate, find out if they're being enforced, and, and before we perhaps consider banning music outdoors, certainly considering different levels. And, you know, we, you and I worked on that sound ordinance, and there's certain levels, and they're not allowed to go over at ten o'clock and eleven o'clock. And it may be that we need to, to look at that again. And it's because it's summer that it is loud and people are out there. But again, I try to help folks think of ways to solve problems, and it always comes back and sometimes hits me in the face. But, you know, whether it's a lawnmower or a truck or the recycling truck or someone cutting a tree down or booming music, we do live in a city. It is noisy, and we all try to do the best we can to sleep when we can. And with that, we are going to consider going into closed session for the purpose strategy negotiation connected with collective bargaining. Is there a motion for that?
Still moved.
Your Honor, unless the council members have specific questions about collective bargaining tonight, I don't have any specific updates, so we can skip this.
This was just in case there was news?
Correct.
And you shared with us the court made some concessions.
Correct.
The court, the union is thereby saving a job and reducing a layoff.
Yeah.
But there's no other news?
There's no, no other news to share in closed session, so.
Does anyone object to closing the meeting down? If not, we are adjourned.